Hello, I'm Pastor Dave and this is our first talk about the Book of Acts. Now, as you should know, this first lesson encompasses all of chapters one, two, and three. Now, as we look through this, keep in mind what I have going through my head of, first off, we just had a sermon on chapter one verses one through 11 this past Sunday, and I would encourage you to watch that if you have not already. Also, most of you probably know the story of Pentecost, which is Acts two. So, we're not exactly going to delve heavy into things that you've already heard. But still, we have three chapters to go through. So, to start, we start at the beginning, Luke 1:1. And what we see here tells us that Luke is the author of Acts, and he is picking up right where he leaves off with Luke's Gospel. Now, Luke's Gospel ends with the resurrection and the ascension. So, here is the story of the church starting at that point, at the ascension. And as we heard on Sunday and as we see here, we kind of have the final instructions where Jesus tells them to wait for the coming of the Holy Spirit. This is something Matthew puts at the end of his Gospel. And there's a lesson in here about the importance of patience and learning to wait. But one of the reasons behind this is really because Luke is trying to show that Christianity is not built on just human speculation, but on actual events. And possibly this was written to more of a Roman audience with the idea of saying, "This is what Christianity actually is. It's not what the Jews are telling you what it is or others who are against us. This is what Christianity is." And also serve to give lessons that would help others really grow in their faith. Now, one of the things that we do see in this is the fact that the disciples are told to do and teach. They're not meant just to do one or the other. Acts of mercy are tied with the Gospel. But also in this, we see that we're kind of covering down on Elijah and Elijah. When Elijah passed a mantle to Elijah at his ascension, we're kind of getting that same feel here. This is tying the New Testament back into the Old. But we're also reminded in this, and as we heard on Sunday, that this is more about, more than just about us getting to heaven, but really about the relationship with power within the church. And then we get the ascension. And this is where the challenge for the church truly lies, because the centrality of the Kingdom of God is really the message. And this is different from many of the ancient civilizations, because if you look at the history of God's people, they've often been concerned with worldly issues. The Babylonians, the Persians, the Greeks, the Romans. And this is taking us away from that, that ultimately what happens in heaven matters more. But we have a purpose while we're here, and this is why the Holy Spirit is coming. Because it would make the church, Christ's witnesses, first in Jerusalem and Judea, then into Samaria, which is like the half-Jewish bridge into the world, and then to the whole world, the Gentiles. And they're called to be witnesses, and when you think of it in that terms, a witness really does three things. They speak to what they know is true. It's a witness not of words, but of deeds or speaking actions. And in Greek, the word for witness is the same as martyrs. So, really, this is where the church was headed. Being told to wait for the coming of the Kingdom of God, but in the meantime, to do the work of the church, to witness to the word and the works of Jesus Christ. And really, this is the prep work for what will come in chapter two, when the apostles go from basically being the spectators to the event to being the actual participants. Now, after the ascension, we have a practical matter, and that is the replacement of Judas as a disciple. And really, what's interesting, they're here, it's the Sabbath day. And technically speaking, on the Sabbath day, you cannot travel more than 2,000 cubits, which a cubit is 18 inches. So, 2,000 is roughly 3,000 feet, little over half a mile, just a hair under a kilometer. And here, you have the remaining 11 disciples. You have Jesus's brothers, who were opponents in the Gospels, but are now part of the, part of the early church. And they're debating needing a twelfth, which 12 has a lot of symbolism, the 12 tribes of Jacob. And oftentimes, 12 is seen as the completeness, wholeness. And at this point, you have roughly 120 followers of Jesus Christ. Now, to put this in perspective, at this point, there were probably, there were roughly four million Jews. All the followers of Christ were Jews at this point. So, basically, one out of every 30,000 Jews followed Christ. But what's also interesting is 120 is also the number required to form a synagogue. So, this is a legitimate community. Now, when we look at Judas, we can see this in Matthew, chapter 27, verse 5, that he killed himself. And there were many reasons, and we're not going to delve heavily into this, but there are many reasons why people speculate Judas did what he did. Whether it was Judas trying to save himself, whether he felt betrayed because he, Asgarit means that he was a man of carryoff, which means he wasn't Galilean, he was different, he was an outsider from the rest. Whether it was greed, whether he came to dislike Jesus, or whether he was trying to force Jesus's hand to actually act. But regardless, there is the serious concern about leadership within the church. And basically, the interesting part of Christian leadership is the leaders are chosen from below to lead from above. Every pastor comes from a church. At one point, we were all laypeople. We weren't born and bred to be a pastor. And we always pick leaders from the people of the church who then lead, and then ultimately go back to the pews. So, they were trying to figure out who would do this, so they did it by a very appropriate means, and that's the casting of lots. Casting of lots was used in the temple to determine who did the priestly duties, and the basis behind it wasn't leaving it to chance or luck. It was from the viewpoint of, "We don't know who should do it, so we trust that God will do it." And to make this really godly, you pray before you do so. So, always remember this when we're looking for people to fill roles in the church. If we don't get people, we had the biblical methodology of casting lots to determine who will do what. And ultimately, Matthias was chosen out of the two to function in this office as an apostle. And we should take a moment to clarify who an apostle was. The qualifications of the apostle were that they lived day to, that basically they were a witness to what Jesus had done. So, they were there to see Jesus's actions, to hear His teachings. And moving forward, they would live day to day with Jesus, which is what all Christians should do. And also, they were a witness to the resurrection. They saw the resurrected Lord. But really, when we look at it this way, there is no formal successor to the apostles in that regard. To have seen the resurrected Lord, to be an eyewitness to the events to testify to. And truly, this is also reminded for this early church that they were led by the witnesses to the actions, more than anything else. So, that kind of encompasses all of chapter one. But when we get to chapter two, we're looking at the day of Pentecost, one of those passages you hear preached every single year. Often, we focus it as the birth of the church, so the church's birthday. But when we look at this, and there's a lot to this, we kind of see a bridge happening. There were three main Jewish holidays: Passover, Pentecost, and Tabernacle, at least according to the scholar William Barclay. Pentecost was 50 days after the Passover. Now, if we look scripturally speaking, the crucifixion happened at the Passover. So, we look at Pentecost is 50 days after Easter, which puts us about two days after Pentecost. And there's a historical significance to Pentecost, that it was a commemoration of giving of the law of Moses on Mount Sinai. It was also agriculturally speaking, when the first offering of the barley crop was brought to God in two loaves of bread. So, we see the basis of this in both Leviticus, chapter 23, verse 21, and Numbers, verse 28, verse 26. Now, what's interesting to note is, we could tell by the language that Luke was not present at the day of Pentecost, he wasn't there. But the language comes heavily from Scripture. We hear him say about, "It sounds like winds," which can mean winds or breath. And this goes back to Ezekiel, chapter 37, verses nine and 10. There's sight signs, like the tongues of fire on top of the burning bush. And this goes back, yeah, the burning bush in the wilderness. We also heard what was seen in the tongues of fire. And that actually ties back to Luke's Gospel, verse, or chapter three, verse 16, when it's mentioned that "they will bathe with fire and with the Holy Spirit." But as we look really in these first 13 verses at the day of Pentecost, Luke's words say very clearly what happened and who was there. But there's always issues we have with what happened that day. And one is the spiritual gift of speaking in tongues. Because as we can see in the Scripture itself, specifically verse eight, "And how is it that we hear each of us in his own native language? Parthians and Medes, Emalites and residents of Mesopotamia, Judea and Cappadocia, Pontus and Asia, Phrygia and Panphilia, Egypt and the parts of Libya belonging to Cyrene, and visitors from Rome?" We're getting a breadth, a wide cross-section of the Eastern Roman Empire in this, of people who were there, Jews, proselytites, and visitors. We're getting all this here, and each of them is hearing the apostles speak in their own language. And this has become kind of an area of discussion in the church today of what is the speaking of tongues. Now, in this case, what's interesting is the fact that there was kind of common languages at that time. Nearly every Jew could speak Aramaic, and Gentiles could all speak Greek. Those were the two primary languages that they could have used. It's much like today, if you know English and French, you can go most of the world and not have any problems. So, what exactly is Luke saying here about this gift? And part of it might be the fact that the Holy Spirit gave the apostles a gift to speak in foreign languages so they can spread the Gospel. And this is truly a spiritual gift. And it serves a greater Kingdom of God. Because you can spread the message to anyone in the world, and people can understand it in their own languages. And the miraculous part of this specific act is the fact, they were Galileans, okay? Galileans typically did not learn foreign languages. It was kind of a backwater. My favorite way of explaining this would be to think of Uncle Si from Duck Dynasty and having him speak Mandarin Chinese to a diplomat. You would, if that would ever happen, you would just be dumbfounded, because you wouldn't expect it. But yet, that is essentially what's happening, that these people that are seemingly not educated in the diplomatic arts and foreign languages are now speaking the Gospel of Jesus Christ to everyone so they could understand it in their own language. And for me, this is a key differentiation between the spiritual gift and not being a spiritual gift. Because the gift of tongues, we can look in Scripture says, it needs someone who is able to interpret. But really, it should also have a purpose, an evangelistic purpose. If you want to speak of heavenly languages, you need to know what the purpose is. People need to hear what it says, and how does that serve the Kingdom of God? If it doesn't really serve the Kingdom of God, we can debate whether it's a spiritual gift. But we're seeing that this is also something else. This is a reversal of the Tower of Babel from Genesis, where in Genesis, God, when the people decide to gather to show their strength as humans and build the Tower of Babel, and God confuses them by making them all speak a different language. Here, it's reversed. Which this shows, means that Pentecost shows in the Kingdom to come, this is what it will be, it will be all people together. And right now, the church is the advanced outpost of the Kingdom of God. Now, as we continue, we get Peter's first sermon, verses 14 through 36. And this is the first account of a Christian sermon that is ever given. And he breaks it down into a kind of a four, breaks it into like four sections. The first is the kerguma, which is the herald announcement, a plain statement of the Christian faith. Then we have the dedekah, which is the teaching, answering the questions. The paraklesis, which is the exhortation, preaching urging duty to obligation. And then finally, the hamalia, treatment of any subject in light of the Christian faith. Those are kind of the ways sermons are. And this one leans heavily into the kerguma, which he is just proclaiming the Gospel of Jesus Christ. And as we look at it, he's basically saying five key points. First, that Jesus is the fulfillment of the Old Testament. Second, Jesus is the Messiah. Jesus the Messiah has come, so all the prophetic prophecies have been fulfilled, and the new age has dawned. Jesus was born of the line of David, which is important to fulfill the Old Testament. Jesus will return in glory, and Jesus alone is salvation. Now, with all this happening, people had that logical conclusion about how they were drunk. That's what kind of led to this sermon. "The Jewish day begins at 6:00 a.m. This was the third hour. This is 9:00 a.m." But this thing is kind of fun, I always joke, I'm like, "I've known, I've been to college, I've known people who, being drunk at 9:00 a.m., it's not an issue." But this plays an important role, because they are accused of being drunk. This is actually a teaching that some will understand and others will not. But ultimately, Peter is proclaiming the day of the Lord. This is a message for the Jewish people and the people who knew the Jewish faith. Because this is radical and important for them. The Jewish people held to the Abrahamic covenant that they were God's chosen people with special privileges. And history would match their special privileges with their chosen nature. The day of the Lord was the day they would receive the honor they dreamt of, that special status. And this is prophesied repeatedly. Isaiah, chapter two, verses 12 and 13, Amos, chapter five, verse 18, Sepphanah, chapter one, verse seven, Joel, chapter two. Especially Joel, chapter two. But as we see this, we're seeing that this was going to be a radical departure. The Jewish people had a set priesthood. As we see in verses 17 and 21 with quoting Joel 2. This new church is where everyone is a prophet. Some are appointed to pastors, but everyone to some degree is called to teach. We see about humanity's universal need of Christ, and how important this will be. And of course, we're also bringing up the fact that Jesus in this is, was still a man, both fully human and fully divine. So, the miracles have to be brought into what happened. And Peter notes that really, with all that he did, was not a violation of natural orders or laws of nature, but a restoration of God's original laws for nature. And kind of shows us what the Kingdom of God will be like, some of the hope we hold. And even when it comes to the crucifixion, Peter proclaims that this was all part of God's plan. It wasn't done on a whim, God planned this out. And that God was, is, and will be sovereign. The Jewish people could, and this was a struggle, because the Jewish people couldn't fathom a crucified Messiah. I mean, that was shame and agony, not victory. But here, Peter is saying, "Christ was not the victim. There is no shame. This was done for redemption, this was God's plan, this was the fulfillment of prophecy." And if you look in Deuteronomy, chapter 21, verse 33, we see suffering fulfilled prophecy. And ultimately, this is, the whole sermon is about Jesus being the chosen one, how this fulfills God's plan. And bringing about how the resurrection is proof that Jesus is the chosen one of God. And this falls in line with Psalm 16. And pointing out that you can visit the tomb of David, because David's body is there, but there is no tomb of Jesus Christ. And then reminds the church that the disciples were witness to all that had happened, reiterating he is, Jesus is the Messiah, and closes with the confession of the church. And in this, we get a radical change. And this starts in verse 37 through 42, where we get the first converts. That's why we jokingly say, "This is probably the greatest sermon ever preached," because of the immediate amount of converts that came to Jesus Christ that day. And this does help us grasp the fact that our sin is responsible for the crucifixion of Christ. If we, if it weren't for our sin, it would have been unnecessary. But because this happened, there is a required response, which is to repent. Meaning that we ask for the forgiveness of our sins, we ask for forgiveness, but the consequences aren't fully removed. But we also have the future gift of the Holy Spirit. And this reminds us that repentant is necessary for salvation. Because that is our response to the sin that we had that led to the crucifixion of Christ. But then we get into what happens afterwards, where we get the life of the believers. And this is where, starting at verse 42, we can get in trouble. And there's been some tension in there of how the church lived versus how we live now. And the question of whether or not this was entirely possible. Now, some of this is entirely possible for us today. There's really about nine things that this church did that kind of show us what the church should be. We can see that it was a learning church. Doctrine wasn't a passive thing, it was something that was active, it was learned, it was enforced, it was followed. There was fellowship, they spent time together. They were praying. They always went to God first, they didn't just rely on themselves. They were reverent. There was an awe and reverence for God. There were things happening, signs and wonders. You could, they could tell God was at work through the Holy Spirit in that church. The one that we often trip up ourselves on was, it was a sharing church. And we get that when they say, "Everything was held in common." This isn't a call to some form of Christian communism. It was more the idea that a Christian cannot bear to have too much, nor can they stand what others have too little. That basically, it's a different way of looking at the relationship with our stuff. It's of saying, "Well, I have it, but I don't need it, someone else can use it." In many ways, it'd be like Bart, one example we could say would be like, it'd be like a small church having a communal lawnmower, because if it spends most of the week in your garage, why can't someone else use it? Instead of everyone having their own. Wasn't meant to say, "Sell everything and live in a commune." It was more of, think differently about how you live your stuff and how, with your stuff, and how you can use that to help others and help the church community as a whole. That's the other side, this was internal church, not worldwide. They were a worshiping church. They never skipped out on worship, they did go to God's house. This point, they were still going to the temple. They were a happy church. That seems self-evident, but a gloomy church is kind of a contradiction. You should be happy at church, you should be happy when you're together as a church and in worship. If not, there's some conversations. And really, part of this was also the idea that the church was full of likable people. And it's one of those hallmarks of a true and authentic faith, that the church is full of likable people. There's something attractive and good about it. If it's not, we got a conversation, we need to look internally at ourselves. And really, as we look through all this, this is really what the church should be. This is the hallmarks of that first church. We always say we want to be like a first-century church, or like the early church. Well, that means we learn, we fellowship together, we pray, we keep God in reverence. We do, we allow God to work amongst us and give thanks to God for it. We share with one another, we worship together, we're happy, and we'd like to be around each other and welcome people in. This is different than what we would truly expect. But these are those hallmarks of that first church. But as we get into chapter three, and you can tell these videos are going to be in-depth, and I'm glossing. Now, we're back to the actions of the church. And here we have Peter and John going to the temple at the hour of prayer, the third hour. There are three special times to pray in the Jewish day, 9:00 a.m., 12:00 p.m., 3:00 p.m. So, the third, sixth, and ninth hours. And at this point, Peter and John were still fully Jewish, which meant that they were really harping one of those three foundations of faith: Torah, worship, and giving alms, showing kindness. Because of that third one, it was never uncommon for, both in the Jewish world and throughout the ancient world, for people to sit as shrines and temples to beg. And this kind of goes to the idea of like, love a man and loving God have to go hand in hand. You cannot despise humanity and love God. At the same token, you can't love humanity and despise God. They have to be together. So, here at this beautiful gate, the extravagant main entrance to the temple is this man. And he's not broke financially, or just financially broke. He is physically broken, he's over 40 years old. And that, the language here basically says that he pretty much suffered for decades. He had no silver, no gold, and he had nothing. So when he asks for alms from Peter, Peter has nothing, no gold, no silver, but instead, he is able to perform the miracle in the name of Jesus Christ, rise and walk. And this comes out of that Commission of the Twelve, that we see a little bit of here in Acts, chapter one, but we also see back in Matthew twenty-eight. He has the authority to cast out demons and cure disease. They had this when were given this authority while Jesus was still on earth. And this really does show us that the miracles were still happening, happening at the time of the apostles. So much so that next week in chapter four, we see that the Sanhedrin can't even deny that the miracles are happening. Now, for us, this leads to a deeper question as well of, why did the miracles stop? Well, there are some questions on that. Of, we can point out that there's no more true apostles. But also, we can think deeper at the point of a miracle. A miracle is God doing something that humanity itself cannot do. With the advances in medical treatment and technology, what doctors and nurses do on a daily basis today would be considered a miracle by the ancient people. And it can be a reminder that God will not do for us what we can do for ourselves. And that might be the biggest differentiation between miracles today and miracles then, and why they seem to be less common. We can do so much more for ourselves than they could then. But also, in this, we get another lesson as well. This is a hard one for the church to remember, and that's when it comes to the alms giving. It's not bad, but temporary modest financial gain or handouts is not our sole focus. There's more that we can do. But after this event, and really the next six verses, the people react to what Peter and John have done. And they have to deal with this, and Peter talks. And really, in these verses, he does a few things. He denies two things. First, he denies the use of any witchcraft, magic, sorcery, mind over matter, all of that. Peter denies that. What he did was any of that. And he also denies that this event was predicated on either the recipient of the miracle or the instrument of the miracle. It was God's work through Peter, that neither of them, their worthiness wasn't required to make the miracle happen. Instead, he affirmed six things, that Jesus healed the man, that God gave Peter and John the gift of faith, healing, and miracle work. Christ should be praised as the source of life, because it was Christ's work that allowed this to happen. Miracles involving the lame man is a sign that the Mes- Messianic kingdom is here. Christ should be exalted as a source of faith and worked the miracle, and that miracles serves the gospel message. And it was very stressed that this, that in this, that Peter did not perform the miracle. It was the work of God. This wasn't magical. And as he talks, he does bring up the resurrection. And it almost seems out of place for many of us. But early preachers really did stress the crucifixion as the great crime of humanity. So much so that pointing out that Pilate knew that it was an injustice. And they would use this as the mechanism of saying, look what sin can do. That's how unjust sin can be. They also preached the vindication of the resurrection, because with no resurrection, there's no church. And with, and the resurrection is the proof that God was behind Christ. And the early church also stressed the power of the risen Lord. These early preachers knew their limitations, but they also knew that those limitations did not apply to God. And really, when we look at this, this is what is really common for Peter's first sermon, and then in this message as well. The stress was on everything that God did. The stress was on the gospel message, the crucifixion, the resurrection, the power of God in the world. Now, on a doctrinal point, Luke, and neither Luke nor Acts brings up the idea of substitu- substitutionary atonement. That being that Jesus's death was the result of human depravity and paying the price for our sin in place of us. However, at least in my mind, that I look at it the other way and go, does not human depravity show us the need for substitutionary atonement? Because nothing we can do ever can make up for our own sins. But what we do see is that hu- humans tend to do violence in the face of truth. And that was part of Peter's message. And ultimately, the message gets back as you look from seventeen through twenty-six, the message is the same as in his first sermon. Repent, again reminding us that repentance is important for faith. There's a warning of what happens if we don't, but we're called to repent, being reminded that repentance leads to total forgiveness, a spiritual refreshment, and universal restoration. And that this will come when Christ comes again. But ultimately, what Peter does here, I always say is amazing for the fact that he was the one who ran, but now he preached before the crowd. He is preached in the temple. But the message is the same across the board. That Christ died, Christ rose from the dead, and we are called to repent of our sins and come to faith in Christ. And that ultimately is the message we get out of these first three chapters. Now, as we continue in this, yes, these talks are long. But there's a lot of information here. This is really on the surface. So I invite you now, whether you're going to participate on the Zoom call, or whether you're in a small group or even on your own, go through the, kind of the booklet you got at church or through the online digital copy, where there's questions to ponder and discuss with each other. There are some key points that will, that are also in the handout, as well as accompanying scriptural passages. Now, if you have any questions, please feel free to email me at pastordavemackaway@gmail.com. Um, if questions arise, depending on how many arise, will be how quickly I come back to do a question and answer video type type support for this. But until next time, get looking over the discussion questions, and then next week, we start again with chapter four.